Very good. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Lunenburg zoning board of appeals. I'm going to tell you how the hearing will proceed, but first I have to give you a notification that the hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law. Please be advised that this meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable, on Facebook Live, on the public access Facebook page, and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. To participate remotely from a computer, go to the Zoom meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. Like that, I'd like to introduce the board. To my left is Lisa Normandin, I'm Alfred Gravel, James Bezakowski, Patrick Callahan, Tony Nacastro, and Don Gurn. The way the hearing will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have on the application while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. With that, I would ask Lisa to please read it.
This is an application for a special permit for dimensional variation. The applicants are Brian and Katie Fox of Four Cove Road. The proposed description, the proposed project involves the construction of an addition to the existing single-family dwelling. The addition will be constructed on the south side of the dwelling in the location of an existing shed which will be removed to provide space for the addition. The proposed addition will consist of living space at the existing first-floor elevation with a drive-under garage on a lower level. A secondary driveway will be constructed to provide access to the drive-under garage as required by the building commissioner, a special permit to vary their rear yard setback requirement and building height requirement with respect to the proximity to the lot line have been applied for. The applicable section of the code of Lunenburg is 250-5.2E1 and 250-5.3A2. The questions and answers on the application are as follows. Please describe how the proposed action will prevent conditions that are injurious or dangerous to the public health, unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire, or explosion. The response: Proposed use of the property will continue to be residential. There is expected to be no noticeable change to traffic patterns related to the proposed addition. As such, the proposed action will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous as it will not add additional and does not constitute a new danger of fire or explosion. B, please describe any material adverse effects on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood. The proposed improvements, addition, driveway, shed removal will increase the assessed value of the property and also the market value of the property. As such, we expect the proposed addition to have a positive effect on land values in the neighborhood. C, please describe how the proposed use or activity will operate with reasonable regard for order and sightliness of an open use. The reply: The applicant has hired Damon McQuade Architects to design the proposed structure. The design of the proposed structure, addition, will not match, will match the architectural characteristics of the existing structure and will not be unsightly. Architectural plans have been attached to this application for the board's reference. And D, please describe how the proposed action will reduce, in, or prevent noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare at the lot lines amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent properties. The response: As mentioned, the proposed use will continue to be residential. The structure will not produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare that would be detrimental to the adjacent properties. And the additional information: The specific relief being sought by the applicant is to vary the dimensional requirement of the rear yard zoning setback. The requirement is 20 feet. The existing is 19.3 feet, and the proposed is 3.7 feet. And 9.7 feet of relief from the required building height defined in section 250-5.2 A2. And attached is the request for determination from the building inspector, setting forth the sections that I just mentioned. There's a copy of the list of abudders, and there is a site plan and building plans attached. I also received a memo from the Board of Health agent on January 15th, just for the record. The Board of Health has no issues regarding the rear setback or building height. The following will need to be addressed as part of the building permit. The proposed driveway is on top of the leaching area. The leaching area is not designed for H20 loading, nor is the leaching area vented in accordance with Title 515-2407. The Board of Health will also need to see plans of the room layout of the existing house to ensure the three-bedroom septic can support the proposed addition in accordance with Title 5 and Lunenburg septic regulations. And a Title 5 inspection will be required prior to sign off on building permit per 15.301 system inspection five. A system shall be inspected prior to any change of use of the establishment or increase in design flow or prior to any expansion of use of the facility served for which a building permit or occupancy permit from the local building inspector is required. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant or his rep to address the issues. One of the things I'd like to have you do going through is giving all the dimensionals as is now and the dimensionals as they are.
Certainly.
As regard to the height and rear yard.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Ryan Proctor. I work for Dillison Roy Civil Design Group. I'm here tonight representing Katie and Brian Fox, who are with us in the audience As was written, thank you, as was written to the record, we are here tonight seeking two approvals, the first of which is zoning relief for the rear yard zoning setback, as well as the building height for a proposed addition to the existing single-family home at Four Cove Road. The property is situated on the corner of Cove Road and Sandy Cove Road, so just to orientate the board, Cove Road is at the top of the plan, Sandy Cove Road is on the west side. The existing dwelling is shown in brown. The proposed building addition is shown in blue, and the existing accessory structure, the shed and garage that was indicated in our application to be removed, is outlined in red adjacent and southeast of the proposed addition. I'll talk about the two approvals that we are seeking tonight individually, the first of which was relief to the rear yard zoning setback. The existing structure currently is 19.7 feet off the rear yard property line, which is planned south as we're orientated. That is the primary structure. The accessory structure that we're proposing to remove currently is 1.1 feet off the lower property line. It is also located within a five-foot foot easement that runs along that southerly property line, so that's the accessory structure that is 1.1 feet off that lot line as well as existing within that easement. The proposed structure, again, shown in blue, we've moved outside of that, of that footpath easement and increased the setback to that property line to 3.7 feet. That would be to that southwest corner of the addition. The second item that we are seeking relief for is relative to building height. So in the residentially zoning district, the maximum building height adjacent grade to ridge height is 38 feet. The existing dwelling, per that bylaw, is about 17 feet, and the proposed ridge of the accessory, of the addition is actually less than that. There is a subsequent definition of building height as it proclaims to, respect to the proximity to a lot line. So essentially, and I'll try to explain this the best I can, the vertical separation between a point on the property line and a point, and the highest point of a structure cannot exceed that horizontal separation by more than five feet. So as a very simple example, if you were on level ground and you had a structure 10 feet off the property line, your building height at that point could not be more than 15 feet. If you were 15 feet off the property line, your building height couldn't be more than 20 feet. So that's, it's just a linear progression in relation between the height of the structure and that property line. So in the zoning table, and I'll walk over and point out, I calculated two of the nearest points of the proposed addition to document the existing grades and the grades of those peaks to determine that we needed 9.7 feet of relief for the proposed addition. Those are the two approvals that we're seeking tonight. As was written to the record, we will also be filing with the Conservation Commission as a portion of the work does fall within the 100-foot buffer zone of Hickory Hills Lake, and we also will be working through those comments that we received from the Board of Health as well. I think that's all I have, Mr. Chair. If you have any questions or need any more information, I'd be happy to provide it.
One quick question on, on the addition.
Yes.
Oh, there is, the shed there that you're removing, right?
Yep.
Is that on the property line or a little bit over the property line to, let's say, 32 Sandy Cove?
It is not over the property line.
It's not over the line, okay. Because I was trying to figure out exactly where the property line was, and that, with the trees that are there.
Yes.
Almost looks like that's a, you know, kind of where the property line is.
It's, it's very close. It's, it's 1.1 feet off the property line. If, if you're familiar with the site, there's a shed, I believe, on Sandy, on the southerly property, the abutting property as well. The property line splits between those two.
Right, so when I was looking at, they have a gray shed there on 32 Sandy Cove Road.
Right.
That's right on that same side.
Yes.
And so with this and that, what would be the distance between them to the neighbor's shed? It looks like it would only be about 10 feet.
It would be, I'm not sure if we located the abutting structure on our plan.
Okay.
So I do not have that answer for you right now.
Okay, and the, the height issue, as the house sits right now, is, is non-issue, however, it's the moving out that makes, creates a new non-conformity.
That's, that's accurate, yes.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to the board. I do have more questions, but I'm going to open it to the board. Have you applied to the building, I'm not the building, the Board of Health previously to this for construction with a new, or checking on the septic system and the leaching field and all of that?
We have not yet. This was step one for us. The system is sized for a three-bedroom house, and the existing dwelling is two bedrooms, and we're adding one, one bedroom with this addition. So it's our belief that it's adequately sized, and then we would have to address their comments relative to the, the H20 loading, given the driveway location.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board at this time?
The driveway is to the left of that?
The existing driveway, I'll just walk over and point.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's to the west side of the house.
Okay.
And then there is a proposed driveway that'll provide access to the drive-under garage at the, at the lower level of that addition.
So you would keep both driveways?
That, that is the intent.
And which driveway has the leaching field concern? Is it the new driveway?
It's the new driveway, correct. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Are you building a spare bathroom? Are you putting another bathroom in, or was it just?
There is a master bathroom in the.
So you're putting another bathroom in?
It's part of the addition, yep.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, that's it.
I just had one quick question. Sorry, I'm trying not to let our microphones fight each other. So it was 3.7 feet from the rear lot line, and then you said 9.7 feet of relief on the height. So is this, is that the 17.7?
No, so if I can grab the mic, I'll walk over.
Yeah, sorry.
So the building height, as I mentioned, it's a function of the distance to the property line. So I have two points, critical points of the proposed house. One is the proposed peak, which it's hard to see with the color, but there's a ridge line that runs laterally here. So the proposed ridge elevation at this point is 396.2, and then when you correlate that to the point along the property line, we end up with a, a maximum height at that It's about 16 feet, and then when you subtract it out, the zoning relief that we need for that is the 9.7.
Okay, so that, you said that height was like 16 feet?
Roughly, I think it's, if it's defined per your bylaw, it's the nearest point adjacent to the house to the ridge, so it's about 15 feet from, it's actually the highest point adjacent to the house is up there.
Okay, 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 I got you, okay.
But the new ridge is lower than the existing ridge.
Yes, okay, that's what I thought you said.
Okay.
Okay, so as you, as you stated, you're going to follow the same architectural design. So it's a log cabin, it's going to, the addition is going to be a log cabin as well, look?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be veneers, you know, the look like.
If you want to speak, you have to come up to the mic and give your name and address.
It, it'll, it'll have the same look and feel as the, as the same structure, existing structure.
And as far as the, the height, it basically is following, like you said, it's a little bit lower.
That's right.
In the original house.
Yes.
Okay, and you have, actually, if you stand on Cove Road, the driveway to the right is where the entrance is, correct?
If you're standing on Cove Road, yes.
On the left is where you're going, there's a deck out there?
Yes.
And you're going to go down and you're going to have a garage under, is that correct?
That's correct.
On that driveway?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
You're actually moving that structure, I don't have it in front of me, so it's actually not following the same lines as it ours, it's actually pushing back a little?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
See where the bridge is?
Yeah.
To the right, that's coming, that's going away. This structure is being removed?
That's going to move, okay. All right, okay.
Do you need this?
No, actually, I, I was trying to read that earlier, it's too small from what I could see anymore. All right, any other questions from the board? Let me see if I have anything else. Okay, and the, and the house itself, towards Sandy Cove Road, as far as the setbacks, they're already non-compliant, is that correct?
That's right. So since we're on a corner lot, we have the 40-foot front yard setback on both sides, so it is non-conforming with that 40-foot setback on the Sandy Cove Road side, the existing structure.
Okay.
Yep.
And the other thing, you stated that the addition, you have to go to Conservation that is in with the 100, within the 100 feet?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, because I was going to ask that question about whether you could do something else, but I've kind of looked at it, and it makes sense, I guess. That doesn't, I was thinking if you could maybe put an addition towards where the deck is or all of that, but like you say, it, it wouldn't make sense, I say, okay. All right, any other questions from the board? Here are none. I would ask for a motion. Oh yeah, public, please, please, come to the mic, name and address.
Hi, my name is Donna Saya. I live at 32 Sandy Cove Road. That is right next to where the new addition will go. And I have some questions, just to clarify.
Yep.
I'm thrilled that they want to add on to the house, but I am concerned about a few things, some of which I don't, I'm not knowledgeable about, so I'm looking for some guidance. I do have, from the Board of Health, our septic layout, as well as where our water lines come in, and they are on that side. So the one thing I'm concerned about, and this is a copy, if you'd like me to leave it up to you.
Lisa, please.
One of the things I'm concerned about is in 1995, the septic was put in by Larry Warnham. We bought the house in 2000, at the end of 2002, so basically 2003. And the septic field is on the other side of our lot, on the other side of our house, and it appears to be too close to the lake. It was all approved, everything went through on that. The original plan is there, and you'll see it on the original plan, that the septic field was supposed to be in the front yard by Brian's lot line. My water line runs down in, close to the lot line, between the lot line, and it would have had to have been moved. And I checked with the Board of Health, and I had always been told that it was the neighbor that didn't want to have the septic field close to the log cabin, one of the previous owners, but I've since found out from the assessor's office and the Board of Health that it's because his water, his well, water, whatever, comes right down, just right on the lot line, and that's why our septic couldn't go there. So I don't know, I don't, I'm not knowledgeable in this, so it's something that I really want to look into. Are you on, are you on town water?
Yeah.
Oh, you're on town water, so that's not.
Excuse me, you have, you have to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Then, then we can forward questions after.
Okay, all right. So if they're on town water, then apparently that well is like our well, it's not using anymore, you know, it's not used.
I was just going to bring that up.
Yeah.
I was surprised it not on town water.
Yeah, because it's, would go, it goes down that side of the house.
Okay.
So from that, if our septic has to be moved, the Board of Health, in the paperwork that I've gotten from them, that was, what was done in 1995, states that the septic field cannot go in the same spot it is now. It would have to go back up in the front yard, because that's the only place it can go.
Okay.
Which means the water would have to be moved, and it would be, you know, I don't know if that puts it too close to a new, a new addition. That's my concern.
So the, the water you're talking about is your water?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Do you know exactly where your water comes in from the street?
It's on the plan.
Yeah, I didn't quite see it. Do you see it?
It should be kind of close to the lines where you see the, the septic field, the one that was proposed and was planned on before it was moved. It's the large one that's on the angle here. This is where it was supposed to go. This is Brian's property here, and the water line goes right down through here.
Okay, are you on town water?
I'm on town water, but not town sewer.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, there is, no town sewer in this area.
Yeah, I know. And so this is where it ended up going, and this is Hickory Hills Lake right here. So we are within the, the 100-foot buffer zone is up here, and the septic is here. My concern about the septic field, it's from 1995, but our concern is that because of the water table being much higher in Little Hickory than it used to be, and the amount of rain we've been getting, that leaves less area for the septic to work. If that fails, I have to move the septic. So I just want to be proactive and make sure that we're going to be safe. And because I don't want a septic too close to his house.
Right, right.
And so that's that one issue. The other is I was, was wondering if we can get some kind of pins in the ground or just stakes, just to see how close it's going to be to my lot line and to my shed.
Okay. Could we, we put some stakes on the line so that she could see exactly where they are? The line is?
Where the house is, where the addition's going? I'm good with visuals, so it's nice to have. The other would be when Brian had the, the lot line plotted, some of the trees are on my side, some are in his, some need, I think still, may still, I'm sorry, may still need to come down. How will that affect the roots and the healthiness of my trees that I don't want to take down?
Would, would you like to?
Or does he need to take any of mine down?
Do you have more questions?
Yeah.
Are you all settled? Do you have more questions?
I have more questions. Here is the ridge of the house of the addition, is that in line with the existing house, or is it turned so that the peak is facing my lot?
Okay, that's a fair question. I'm going to ask you to answer that. Could you come up and answer that?
Yeah. I actually have some architectural plans.
You could just show her, I think you have drawings in there.
Yes, we did.
Good show.
Yeah.
Slightly off skew, but your house is over on this side, so you'd be looking.
Patrick, looking at that, can you tell me?
At this face, so this is in line with this?
That's right, yeah.
That's perfect.
And then there is another, a lower ridge.
On the lot line.
Uh huh.
I don't know if you can, or if it's scaled.
The reason I ask is that because of the grade of our yard, we have a lot of water coming down off the street in the heavy rains, and that's been more typical in recent years. And I tend to flood on that side if we get heavy rains. So if that was going to be feeding into that, then I would be concerned, but it's going the other direction.
Going the other direction.
Yeah, so I think it's not a problem.
That's what I saw, so that's why I wanted to actually show you that.
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you. I think that's it.
Now, while you're here, answer about the trees. What, are you do, for the addition, are you going to be, like I say, it's hard to figure the lot line, but do you know what trees, are there going to be trees you're going to have to take down?
Jan, I, I believe there's only one tree that needs to be removed. I can point to it on the plan.
Please.
And I think it's on mine, and it's fine, I already agreed to it.
So it's this 16-inch tree, it's right on the corner.
Yeah.
It is entirely on the Four Cove Road property.
Oh, it is, yeah.
These are the other trees that are more or less.
Yeah, I think he was planning on taking this one out perhaps, but we've always had squirrels in it, and the squirrels wouldn't let the tree guy take their tree. Yeah, those are basically my concerns, just making sure that it's not like.
Well, I understand.
Right up against, there's some clearance between the, the addition and my shed and the water issue, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
So basically, I think, I asked him to look, I'm not sure if you could find it.
I couldn't really say exactly. Do you know, maybe this is a question for you, what that distance was right there? Like kind of the.
I just want to know how far away the water line is.
The closest point from the lot line to the blue structure to Cove Road, like that corner?
This corner to here?
Yeah, or no, I'm sorry.
Oh, either way.
East to west, like.
That one?
Up one corner?
Oh.
Towards Cove Road?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
Towards Cove Road.
Right there.
There.
That to the lot line.
To, to this lot line?
No, to like, or sorry, what's so?
Yeah, no, that's.
I'm going the wrong way, I think.
Yeah, you, you were right when you had the.
Sorry, yeah, sorry, sorry.
This, this corner right here?
Yeah.
Lot line, that is 11.1 feet.
Okay.
So we're, we think the water line goes down kind of parallel with those trees? Yeah, is that where we think it goes?
On mine or his?
On.
Oh, yours.
I mean, I'm just.
Yours and his.
Yeah, I think they might be pretty close.
His is on, so just yours, actually.
So mine is, let's see, my water line, I think, goes down here, so it's got some distance.
So that's, looks like 20 feet from the corner of the septic to the property line?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. And this is not, this is the original proposed septic.
Right.
My septic is back here, but if it fails, it has to go up there.
That's what our reserve would be.
Yeah.
Okay, understood.
Yeah, I just don't want to get it too close to the house.
Right.
And, or not be able to do it.
So this dimension, that 20-foot corner to the septic, or corner to the property line, excuse me, the 20-foot setback from a septic to a foundation is per Title 5 code, so if.
Right.
If this is 20 feet to the property line, we're 3.7 feet at least further than.
Okay, so we're fine.
Per that, per that line right there.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Plus, plus nowadays, the new systems they put in, the pressurized systems are totally different than, you know, especially around lakes and water now.
Mm-hmm.
The system, I've seen a few of them put in.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. So those are all the questions I had. Thank you very much.
Are your questions all satisfied? Are you satisfied with the answers, ma'am?
That'd be great, thank you.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you satisfied with, with all the answers? Are you satisfied with, with all the answers?
Um, yes, you know, I just would like to see the, this, the, where, you know, what it kind of will look like as far as that corner and that corner.
And they said they would do that.
Yeah, and that's perfect.
It should be good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Back to any more questions that came out? Anybody on Zoom with any questions or?
Nope, it is just me on Zoom.
Oh. You have any?
I have no question. Digital or physical?
Okay. With that, I, we entertain a motion. Anyone?
I'll make a motion that we approve. The two requests provisionally that approvals are granted by both the Conservation Commission and the Board of Health. And Board of Health requirements are approved and recorded with the building inspector.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second.
Do you have a motion and a second?
Excuse me, do you want to make that condition, the pins in the ground or?
Um, I, I don't, I mean, we could.
It's, I just.
You're going to put the stake.
We'll put the stakes in.
Okay, then we're good.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't, they'll call us and we'll know.
Exactly.
We'll come find you.
You know where we are, it's a short walk from here.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 And aye. Okay, so with that, a special permit is granted?
Two special permits.